It's about 7:09. I'd like to actually call the regular portion of our meeting to order. The first thing we'll do tonight is I'll ask everyone to stand. And if Councilman Underwood could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So tonight, we do have a couple presentations. Our first one, we're very lucky, we have Mr. Lucas Grafton here for a certificate of recognition. Lucas is looking to earn his Eagle Scout. And he did a very special project for us in town. I'm going to hand it off to Vice Chairwoman Maranti, who's going to present you with your certificate and give a little bit more information about what Lucas did for us. So please, Lucas, if you'll join Councilwoman Maranti up at the podium.
Okay, let me tell you a little bit about Lucas and what he has done at Pateroski Park. He's completing his Eagle Scout community project. And that's one of the requirements for a Boy Scout to attain the Eagle Scout rank. He's with Scout Troop 425. And on March 4th, Lucas completed his Eagle Scout project, which was to build and install eight bat houses located at four parks in town. The two houses at Pateroski Park. Three bat houses were also installed on trees in Norton Park. Two houses at Tomaso Nature Park. And one house at Trumbull Park. So we have all of them covered, yeah. He worked with some local businesses to get materials donated. Several bat species are listed as endangered under the Connecticut Endangered Species Act. One reason the bat population is declining is due to loss of habitat. Bat houses help bats to survive. So that's quite an accomplishment and a lot of work. And we are giving Lucas tonight a certificate of recognition, and I'm going to read it. This certificate of recognition is presented to Lucas Grafton in recognition of his outstanding community service and dedication to conservation and environmental protection through the construction and installation of suitable and safe nesting habitat for declining bat populations in Plainville, Connecticut. Dated on this 18th day of March 2024, from the Plainville Town Council, Christopher Wazorko, Chairman, Rosemary Maranti, Vice Chairwoman, Quinn Christopher, Benjamin Gediman, Daniel Hurley, Deborah Tompkins, and David Underwood. And congratulations, Lucas, and thank you.
And just real quick, Lucas, congratulations. Here's a little, just a little pin for you, a Plainville pin that you can take with you. We appreciate you being here tonight. And feel free, if you think there's another project in town that you think needs to be done, feel free to contact us. We'll be happy to talk. But thank you. Congratulations. All right, so now we get to move on to our second presentation tonight. Element 119 is here. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everyone again. Yes, just make sure you talk into the microphone.
Okay, well, ladies and gentlemen, the council, Mr. Chairperson, Madam Vice Chairperson, thank you very much for having us here tonight to give a presentation. I'm here tonight with Mark Sullivan, Chief Operating Officer, and the President and CEO and founder, Andrew Zepa. So tonight, we're happy to report that we, you know, we're looking at the town of Plainville to relocate our facilities into. We began our operations in 2010. Pretty much, it was run as a home-run business in 2010 till about 2017, when the first employees were hired. At that time, we added, you know, Andrew had brought out four employees. Two years later, we were about maybe 12, 13 employees. And today, we're over about 47 and growing, even stronger. So a lot about, a little bit about Element 119. We're an advanced coatings manufacturing organization. We manufacture all of our stuff in the United States. We sell to aerospace, motor vehicles, automotive, and marine coatings. Mark's going to talk a little bit about our history when he comes up here to speak a little bit. But one of the things that I will say is that we're relocating for expansion to bring all of our operations under one roof. Again, as I said, in 2018, we were both locations. We had administrative and we had warehousing in Thomaston. We grew in about 2021. We opened administrative offices over in Cheshire because we were growing at a rapid pace. And today, we believe we found our home here in Plainville. So as a result of that, a couple of things about Element 119. Element 119 is, again, as I said, advanced manufacturing, coatings manufacturer. Last year, we were the SBA Business, Small Business Exporter of the Year for all of New England. No easy feat, but again, obviously, our growing international presence as well. The second thing is, is that we were one of the top 70 businesses in the United States by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce last year. And we were given the first jobs, Connecticut Jobs CT Program through Governor Lamont's office to, for our expansion and growth efforts here in Connecticut. We continue to expand as we grow, and that's why we're looking at the facility we are. We're going to be probably quadrupling, maybe make even more of the footprint. Couple of things that we could tell you is that our sales are over $10 million annually. And we grow 20% to 30% a year currently. With that said, not only are we a coatings manufacturing company, but we're also a research and development company in that aspect. Currently, we are working with four different small business innovation research grants, Phase 2 with United States Air Force. We've had those contracts since 2019. Just in the past year, we've received three new contracts. Value of those contracts is over $4.5 million. We anticipate currently additional probably two to three this year and more next year with between the U.S. Army, National Institutes of Standards and Technology, as well as Department of Energy. So we're not just military, we're also doing for all the various aspects of the federal government, as well as state. With that said, the average wage of all of our employees currently is 20% greater in the Hartford area than the median of the Plainville wage. As I said before, median, average wage of Plainville is about $48,305. Our average wage as of 2023 was $61,326 per employee. Are given about 21.2% higher. Furthermore, we'll be also adding a couple other business venues that have come along with that. We have an artificial intelligence company. We have a couple other things that maybe Mark might want to touch on. But we also see that added benefit too to the Plainville community. We would be adding roughly about $180,000 a year, just averaging per what employees spend a week just on gas, food, whatever else in the Plainville community. So we'd be adding that a year. We'd be looking to move over all the employees within the year's time, a lot sooner. I think there's some areas where we're looking at when we close on the facility in regards to how fast we can move in because there's obviously some renovations that have to take place in some logistics in that area there. With that, I'm going to turn it over, I think, to Mark Sullivan, Chief Operating Officer, where he can elaborate a little bit further. Thank you.
Very well put, Dave, thank you. This is a hard act to follow, Dave and Lucas. I can earn a Plainville pin. I don't know what I have to do to do.
Just because you're last, don't take it personally.
I got a long way to go. So Element 119. I sat last week and I thought about it at the end of the week. We hired two more employees just last week. We're now up to 49 employees, which is a far cry from when I joined the company just a touch over three years ago. And I started to look around and I thought, we have some Gen Xers. We also have some millennials. We have a surprising number of Gen Z'ers working for us. We have a very, very young workforce. One of the things I've come to notice when I talk to the Gen Z'ers that work for us is they don't just want a job. They want to work in a company that does something, that helps the environment, that they can talk to their friends about, and they can basically be proud of working here. We are a zero-waste chemical company. As a matter of fact, I mean, Dave talked about it. We do chemical coatings. Not the sexiest thing in the world. And certainly not something that you tell all your friends, oh, yes, I work for a chemical company. But if you follow it up with, we also work for a zero-waste chemical company. Everything that comes in the door gets used. Nothing goes down the drain. It makes them a little more proud of what we do. We also, I mean, the things that we use, most of the chemicals we use are deionized water. You can drink it. We use silicon, not silicone, not the rubberized stuff. Silicon is the second most abundant element on the face of the earth, next to oxygen. It's everywhere. It's in the beach sand that you see everywhere. It makes up the entire floor of the ocean, all of the oceans. And it's even in that black volcanic sand that you see on some beaches. If you know a little bit about chemistry, you know why. It's made of silicon, but it has feldspar in it, which makes it black. Anyway, we're very, very proud of our company. We've grown leaps and bounds. I myself grew up in the Connecticut River Valley, spent 27 years in Colorado. And Andrew Zepa, the owner of our company, talked me into moving back to the Connecticut area to help run this company. Could not be prouder of what's happened in the short time that I've been involved. Andrew just started the company 12, 13 years ago in his garage, like Dave said. Leaps and bounds since then. At one point, we doubled our revenue every single year for a four, almost a five-year stretch. We really, really have been growing so fast. And we just want to find a home where we can, we can have something to build on in a community to be part of. We think we found that in Plainville. We love it here. Having operations in Thomaston and Cheshire and now being able to bring it under one roof, huge, huge benefit to us. Now, great place that we're moving into because it's right next to Robertson Airport. Dave talked a little bit about the government grants that we are constantly going after. We've got six SBIRs right now, Small Business Innovation Research Grants, that we've already been granted. And Dave can correct me, I believe there's at least another dozen in the hopper that may come to fruition in the next two to three years. We can also help the town of Plainville because there's an airport development zone around Robertson Airport. And we do plan to go after those grants as well. That can be used for many, many different things. It can be used for private businesses. It can be used for community development. Also, it's funny that we got here a little bit early. I wanted to see where the bike path was going through downtown. We already know where it's going through north of downtown. It's going to go right, we're going to give up some of our land. It's going to go right through our land. Very, very happy to do that. We want to be good stewards of the community. With that, I'm going to turn it over to any questions. I'll wait here for anyone that has questions about our company. Andrew is also available. He's the owner of the company, also our chief chemist. He does all of the formulations. But with that, I'll turn it over if anybody has questions specifically for us.
So yeah, so any, I know, I think we're going to talk about Element 119 a couple more times in the meeting. But is there any questions or any comments anyone wants to make? I mean, I'll just welcome, it's nice to, I've talked to some of you already, but it's nice to meet you. We may have some more questions as we get into the meeting. I believe we're under the Town Manager's Report. We'll be talking a little bit about the company and what we're trying to do here. So I know you're not going anywhere anytime soon, so.
Sounds good. And I know you gave us 15 or so minutes, but we know you're running a little late.
Oh, that's all right.
I cut my comments a little short just so we can move it along.
I'm known for long meetings, so it's not anything that everybody's used to.
We would also just like to thank the individuals in the community here as well. The Town Manager, Mr. Paulus, Andy Srolli, Town Attorney, Mark, and Cal. They've been great in regards to helping us, you know, make the decision a lot more easier. We also met with the Fire Marshal, Mark, right? You and I met with the Fire Marshal, as well as a building official. And we think that, you know, your staff is really well.
Well, thank you.
Very good. And we really appreciate you also with your time and your efforts. Just one other statistic I'll just tell you. Last year, we spent 13,624 hours in research and development. We anticipate this year to be approximately 15,000 to 20,000. So again, as I said, that's another avenue to where we're growing in.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and ask David to come back. I think one of the, one of the, maybe I missed, maybe I missed it, I didn't hear it. But the issue around growth and expansion, right? So that we've had an opportunity to have a dialogue and exchange. And what I think is exciting is the fact that not only is it an acquisition and a merger, if you will, of two locations coming here to one, but that their growth story, I think, lends itself to future expansion in a few short years, I would hope. And that's, I think, what we'd all be hoping for. And I don't know if you wanted to elaborate on that.
Yeah, and basically, when we were looking at any, we've looked probably at a good 30, 40, maybe even 50 different locations in the general area. Because obviously, we're a company, we're growing, we also want to keep it with the employee base. We're looking in this general area for a period of time. So one of the other things that we came across is a location that also has flexibility to grow, to be expanded upon. And the current location next to the airport offers that flexibility. I believe when we spoke to the town planner here, that we did have some opportunities where there was a previous footprint for an expansion at the time with the other facility of about, I think it was approximately 100,000 square feet, give or take. We can see potentially moving into that footprint in the next several years. I mean, just given our current trajectory and plus, just one of these grants, if it gives, you know, credence, which we anticipate one of them will do very soon, it's going to, you know, it's going to snowball into something where we have to get more space.
All right.
Thank you, David.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else before we move on? Otherwise, like I said, we will have a couple more opportunities to ask questions as we go through the agenda tonight. But seeing there's no public hearing tonight, we'll move to item three, minutes of the previous meeting. We have a bunch of minutes to approve.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the March 4th, 2024 regular meeting, the March 7th, 2024 public hearing, the March 11th, 12th, and March 13th, 2024 special meetings.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And yes, March has been pretty busy so far for the council. Any comments, questions, changes? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and reports.
Mr. Chair?
You get to go first.
I attended several, you know, Boarding Commission meetings, to which I'm the liaison. I did not attend the Library Trustees, which was last Tuesday because we were here for our budget meeting. But I do know that it was the trustees' turn to have a session where they were giving input on the strategic planning process that our public library is now undertaking, and we've talked about before. Wednesday night, I was at Conservation Commission. And a couple of highlights, the signs alerting visitors to the turtle nesting areas at Tomaso Nature Park are ready. Mark DeVoe, of course, is the staff person that is with the Conservation Commission, has been very instrumental in that. They also looked at and updated a number of action items that they have for Pateroski Pond. The April meeting will be a presentation by Sustainable Connecticut. And they are going to be inviting other towns, boards and commissions, and the town council. And that's going to be on April 10, so I think we'll be hearing about that. And they also noted the work that Lucas Grafton had done with the bat houses and were quite pleased with it. And Thursday, I was at Committee on Aging. And a couple of topics that were discussed were some new programming, the fact that the transportation situation has improved with some hiring of drivers. Such a critical service, that's so important. The facilities improvements that were proposed in the FY '25 budget, which we had talked about, including a new flooring in a section of the building. And they also noted that 2025 will be the 50th anniversary of the Plainville Senior Center. And they'll be looking to plan some sort of commemoration as this year goes on.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to take a moment to recognize D'Amico Construction Company, who is a finalist this year for the Equipment World 2024 Contractor of the Year. 12 companies across the country are chosen. Each finalist will be honored this week during the Contractor of the Year event in Las Vegas. And while we're cheering on Yukon, let's also think about D'Amico and hope that they might be the big winner. So good job, D'Amico.
All right, thank you. Congratulations to them. Anyone else with an announcement or a report? I'll just finish up. Once again, tomorrow is, which will, you know, today's Monday, obviously. But the referendum vote on the middle school project is tomorrow. Voting is from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the firehouse. I just want to make sure, one more reminder, just in case someone's watching between tonight and tomorrow. Hearing no other announcements or reports, we will move on to item five, appointments and resignations. We do have a few appointments this evening.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Motion to reappoint Jennifer Bardis Early and William Ritchie to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the term ending January 2nd, 2028.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Motion to reappoint Jennifer Bardis Early to the Capital Region Council of Government Regional Planning Commission for the term ending December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And just before I ask, on my list, I had a William Ritchie.
Yeah, I said them both.
Oh, did you?
I combined them.
I'm sorry, I completely blanked out then.
That's okay.
Well, thank you for correcting me.
That's my good reading there. Went so smooth.
Yeah, it tells you how much I guess I'm listening. That's not good.
Nice.
That's all right. My grandmother will tell me what I'm doing wrong when she sees this tomorrow night. All right, so item number two, we're all set, and now item number three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint David Dudak, William Brain, and Daniel Coolas to the Veterans Council for the term ending March 1st, 2026.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And I do recognize he did all three at once. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And number four, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Motion to appoint Renato Astafi, 45, Bel Air Drive, as a regular member to the Aviation Commission for the unexpired term ending October 31st, 2024.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions tonight? All right, hearing none. The board chairperson had another commitment tonight. We are up to item seven, the report of the town attorney. Is there anything to report? Good evening. Is there anything to report?
Good evening. No. There's nothing to report. I went to the Big East Tournament. I have laryngitis.
And that's acceptable. We understand. It was a good weekend, I'm sure, in New York. Any questions for the town attorney? All right, we'll move on. The report of the town manager.
Yes, item one is concerning Element 119. You've heard the presentation, the request. And the reason they're before you is a request for a tax fixing agreement that would be a seven-year term for the former location where Carlin Switch is, out by the airport, adjacent to the town's property and municipal airport. They presented a tremendous amount of information on their growth and expansion. We feel this is a good match and a good opportunity to bring a company, a growth company, and have two different locations relocate here under one roof. So the, later on, under new business, we have that item. We also have an executive session in which we've, staff has prepared information with respect to assessments and numbers in terms of understanding the program. I've had great assistance from the town attorney, from our town planner, Mark DeVoe, and Economic Development Director, Cal Halberger, been instrumental in this and bringing it and pulling it all together. There are a few things that we'll need to discuss in executive session. And I suggest that when we get to new business, that we just skip over or hop over that item. Reserve that for the last, after the executive session. But I think we, I will tell the council that in addition to the assistant town manager, Andy Cirelli, myself, and Mark, and we were able to, and Cal, to see the operation firsthand. So we went both to Cheshire and we went to Thomaston with the factory. So we saw the corporate offices, they were very gracious in giving us the tour and meeting the staff and employees at both locations. And they are, I can tell you, bursting at the seams in their Thomaston location. So, but again, you know, there's, I think, a number of growth opportunities for them. We're excited. I think there's a major acquisition, as you know, that's a very large building where Carlin Switch currently operates. So I think this would be a great addition. But again, it's in the context of a request for a tax fixing agreement that we want to make sure that we are very thorough in that process. So there is some documentation that we'll need to review and potentially take action on. But I've had a chance to ask a lot of questions. And so I don't know, you know, if the council has any more. But it is a great opportunity, a long-term. They're investing in Plainville. We, in turn, by, with a tax fixing agreement, would be saying that we would be investing in this company as well. So I think it's a long-term play, but one I think is going to bear a lot of fruit.
All right, is there any, just any questions regarding Element 119? I know we've had a chance to ask some already, but, all right. All right, so and everyone understands we'll just, we'll bypass new business and come out of, if we choose to make a motion, we'll come out of the executive session to make any motions. Okay, all right, next.
Next is item two, which is the Historical Preservation Grant. Cindy has been putting and working on. The State of Connecticut Library has announced that Plainville will be eligible to receive a grant through the Historic Document Preservation Program in the amount of $5,500. And that would be, the funds would be used to administer the town clerk to purchase additional locking cabinets to store confidential records. It's much-needed storage space for the election materials and discharge records on file in the clerk's office. So I think you, my guess is you've seen this before. And that it is an annual type thing. But it's, I think, worth approving and helping the department with its storage and records needs. I don't know if there are any questions for that.
Any questions? Nope, that one's pretty self-explanatory.
All right, then item three, I'll move right in. I know it's what you've all been waiting for, which is the dashboard report. This is going to take a little bit longer, but I'll try to, try to get through it rather quickly. But first page, the format hasn't changed. First page is the town's expenditure budget. And that runs through February 29th. Expended to date, $44,474,671. That represents 65.34%, which is just a hair over the two-year average at 65.03. So everything in line there, it breaks, further breaks down to the general government expenditure. And it almost pains me to say that the Board of Education is only 61% expended. And just... me to say that the Board of Education is only 61% expended and just under their two-year average, while on the town side, I cannot say the same thing. Unfortunately, we're 71.72% and almost one and a half or 2% over the two-year average. And of course, I'm only joking. These are still in line with what we expect. It's about 2% higher due to the higher payroll reflections and inflationary costs, but we hope to catch them in the fourth quarter. Moving on to the police dispatch and overtime expenditures, I think I'm sure I'm on the same page, yes. The police overtime budget is a spend through February 29th, $357,622. That's about $7,000 under the two-year average of $365,347. So, things are in line there, and they are running below the two-year average. So, we're keeping an eye on that. Obviously, that was one of the bigger items that we looked at last year. I believe they were able to turn back some money in that overtime budget. So, I think the chief and the department are doing very well with respect to their budget expenditures thus far. We'll see what the last quarter presents. Roadways overtime expenditure of, total overtime, which is their regular overtime and their snow overtime, $107,453, which is above their two-year average of $92,674 and roughly about $14,779 over. And obviously reflects of the one storm or multiple storms, or one long-duration storm can certainly skew the budget enormously. And obviously reflected over a mild winter last year. So, it's not, it's not anything that I'm concerned about, and they're still under budget at this point with only 80% expended to date. So, we'll continue to monitor that. On the other side, or their counterparts, Building and Grounds, the overtime, they're, they have expended, and obviously, I think we talked about the biggest thing being the balloon festival overtime that skewed this. So, those numbers are reflected here. But they were also over in their regular overtime, obviously, with the balloon festival, but their snow budget as well. So, I think that was a reflection of the fact that it was slightly underfunded in terms of their budget. We've made those adjustments going forward and the new budget, so I think we'll be able to take care of what we see as accurate or more likely to happen in terms of their projection in terms of overtime and storms. So, you know, some, some theory is, you know, you take a, try to take, on storms, you try to take a five-year average, and it, you know, it's just, it's a crap shoot, you never really know, but you do the best you can to try and do that. So, we'll keep an eye on that. We'll take a look at the numbers there, but they are over by about $27,000 in terms of their overtime budget there, and we're hoping that there'll be other items in the, in the department that might make up for that. On the solid waste and recycling, our solid waste, I think I've been reporting, I'll have to go back and check this, but we have been trending pretty, pretty good in terms of the solid waste, whereas now we've seen that move above the two-year average. We had, I think, been trending below that. I've been reporting on that for some time, but we have now exceeded the two-year average by about 50 tons. Not a great amount, but still not under what we thought. Recycling still is under the tonnage, and that's about 128 tons, 128 tons less than the two-year average on the recycling side. So, we're just gotten above the two-year average on the solid waste, but still well under on the recycling. So, we're okay there, and we'll keep monitoring the solid waste. Next page is revenues. Revenues look fine to date, or through February 29th, $59,967,750 brought in in terms of revenue, represents 88.1%. The two-year average is 87.96, or right in line in terms of the revenue, current, total revenue and current taxes, same, we're tracking that, and that is $51,60,675, and that is 99.41%, and just over the two-year average of 99.04. So, everything is in line in terms of the revenue, so nothing shocking there. Our next page is the fund balance, and that is still unaudited, so the numbers have not changed there. Still pushing finance on getting that done, so we'll get those numbers as soon as we can. Special revenue funds, recreation expenditures through February, $144,867, slightly above their two-year average of 50, it's currently 51.66%. The two-year average is 46.9. And again, this is one of those funds that, that has, you know, an adjustment being made as we shake out the two-year of COVID and try to get back on track, but their revenues are through February 29th, $94,148. That's 48%, 48.28%, and the two-year average is 48.34. I think that number is likely to go much higher as they kick off the upcoming online registration process, and obviously, it's going to see a little bit of a blip there. So, we anticipate that coming in, so the next month's report should indicate revenues much higher than the two-year average. Expenditures with Robertson Airport are in line. Obviously, we're going through projects that take time for us to fill out the necessary application and refunds coming back. Water Pollution Control Authority is right in line. Their expenditures are 81.5%. The two-year average is 80.38%, so right, right in line. Their revenues are, in comparison to last year, they received 99.84% off from the two-year average, which was, I think, skewed, it was 113%, and that's a reflection of the investment swings and the savings and losses in that account. So, but everything in line from an expenditure standpoint, and revenues will certainly catch up. Library Fund also, right on, right online. They are at, from an expenditure standpoint, 68.93% expended. The two-year average is 67.62%. So, just a hair above, and their balance, their revenues are 74.43% in terms of revenues over the two-year average of 69.33. And again, there's a component with endowments and investments there as well. So, everything in line there. And then, the last page is the Major Projects Report. And as I've noted, and I'll note it again, I had a conversation with Councilman Hurley about the balances that exist for the town line road reconstruction that has obviously been cleared out, $175,277. And I'll point out the other one in the Northwest Drive Road Reconstruction, also done and closed out with a balance of 130 there. So, those two combined represent over $300,000, and the question is, what will happen to those funds? And I'll just restate that our intention is that we petition the state for a reprogramming and reallocation of those into transportation-related projects rather than turning the money back, that we hoping we'll have an opportunity to reprogram those funds. The turf maintenance program has $227,000 balance for future maintenance on that. ARPA funds, I did supply a copy at your seats this evening. It's the updated version that we could have a further discussion when we get to Wednesday's meeting. I think that's where it was going to come into play, so there's an update there for you. And again, with those funds, I think the Finance Director had indicated that there's a December 31 obligation deadline to have those, those funds obligated. So, the road bond has, has closed out, well, hasn't closed out, we're looking for final closeout there. And then Wheeler School that I mentioned as well, that's also a function of final review before we see the last of that pot of money coming back. And I, sorry to say, I do not have any indication or wild guess, crystal ball, on when that would be, just hoping that it's this fiscal year or next, but we shall see. And with that, that concludes my financial dashboard.
All right. Any questions for the town manager regarding his report or anything else? Then I guess, time for happenings.
Time for happenings. So, tomorrow marks the beginning of spring, so for those who are looking forward to starting their annual cleaning rituals, I have good news. Spring bulk pickup has been scheduled to start on Monday, April 8th, 2024, and it'll end on Monday, June 24th. As a reminder, Plainville has an on-demand policy for the collection of bulk pickup. Residents who currently have curbside waste and recycling collection are eligible to receive one bulk pickup collection per year, free of charge for acceptable large items that do not fit in your normal waste collection. Please visit the Town of Plainville website at www.plainvillect.com for a complete list of acceptable bulk items and instructions on how to request a bulk pickup. The transfer station on Granger Lane is also set to open in April, on Saturday, April 6th. The hours of operation will be on Saturdays only, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The transfer station is for Town of Plainville residents, and ID is required. No commercial vehicles or businesses are permitted to discard materials. There is a fee for disposal of items, so you can refer to the town's website under the transfer station ordinance for fees and a list of acceptable items. And if you have any questions, you can call the Public Works Administration at 860-793-0221, extension 7176. From the Recreation Department, they announced their summer programs. Registration starts on April 1st at 9:00 a.m. for Plainville residents, and on April 15th for non-residents. You can visit plainvillct.reckdesk.com for more information, and you can also find updates on the programs on the town's Facebook and the Plainville Recreation Department's Facebook accounts as well. CT DOT announced a new bus service connecting Plainville to Southington. This is a new bus service that began on Sunday, March 10th, and it is Bus Route 532. It is a route that connects Plainville Center and Queen Street in Southington and includes stops at Price Chopper, Stop &amp; Shop, and Walmart. Buses will operate hourly, seven days a week. From the Plainville Public Library, and for all information on library programs, including registration, you can call the library at 860-793-1446, or visit www.plainvillct.com/library. On Tuesday, March 19th, at 6:00 p.m., the Astronomical Society of Greater Hartford will host a discussion at the library called "The Why and How of Solar Eclipses." Connecticut will experience a partial solar eclipse on Monday, April 8th, and each amateur astronomer who attends the event will receive a pair of ellipse glasses. On Wednesday, March 27th, at 6:00 p.m., the library will be showing a documentary called Feminist: What We're Thinking, the revisiting of the 1970s photos of women that captured a feminist awakening. This 2018 film explores the lives of women and examines the continued need for change. This film is about an hour and a half long, and there's no registration required. A representative from the American Job Center will be at the library to help answer questions, register individuals for CT hires, and assist with resumes. They'll offer one-on-one coaching and more. There is no appointment required. This service will be offered on the following Tuesdays, March 26th, April 30th, May 28th, June 25th, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And finally, from the Plainville Senior Center, and for all items on the Senior Center, you can call them at 860-747-5728. All programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. Snappy Seniors Photography on Thursday, March 21st, at 10:00 a.m. Snappy Seniors will be matting their eight-by-ten photos for the group's upcoming exhibit at the Plainville Library. New members are always welcome to join. The Memory Cafe at the Senior Center on Thursday, March 21st, at 2:00 p.m. The Memory Cafe is a warm and welcoming program for individuals with memory loss. Anyone experiencing memory loss is welcome to attend with their loved ones or caregivers. A movie matinee, The Boys in the Boat, will be featured at the Senior Center on Thursday, March 21st, at 2:00 p.m. It's a fun afternoon with popcorn. Pre-diabetes and diabetes support group and education on Monday, March 25th, at 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. This is a monthly Monday morning meeting, and it'll go until June 24th. Whether you are new to or you have had pre-diabetes or diabetes, you are welcome to attend, and there will be updated, they'll share updated information, tips and tricks and support, and these sessions are open to anybody. Spring has sprung the bird feeder craft. This is open to Senior Center members only on Monday, March 25th, at 2:00 p.m. The cost is $5, and it includes all supplies, and you'll be joining a group of folks who will be working to create homemade orange bird feeders. The Veterans Social Hour on Tuesday, March 26th, at 10:00 a.m. This is conducted by Sherry Voe, the Veterans Liaison for the Hartford Healthcare Senior Services. This is open to all veterans over 60 and their spouses. And finally, Move Your Mind is an event on Wednesday, April 3rd, at 2:00 p.m. You can join presenters from Arbor Rose for a free, interactive, fun presentation by experts on the latest trends in healthy eating. Participants will receive healthy recipes, samples of food, and Good Life Fitness Gift Certificate. Refreshments will be provided. And that is the happenings.
All right. Thank you very much. Any last-minute comments or questions? Hearing none. We will move now to item nine, public comments. At this point in the meeting, anyone who wishes to address the council may do so. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. The first ring says you have 30 seconds left. Second ring means you're out of time. So, Mr. Kislik.
Howdy, town council.
Howdy.
Three minutes. Come on, Chris. Anyway, you know...
You just wasted three saying that comment. You gotta, you know...
I get this feeling a lot of times, you really like to give me a hard time. So, I'm so glad that you mentioned your grandma today. Between your mom and your grandma, they, they treat me so nice, they're so good to me. I figure when you do that, since they tried their best, you know, they did what they could.
You're not the first person to say that to me, believe it or not.
So, it's got to be true. And, you know, another thing, you said one time that, yes, Marilyn, if I tell her what to say, I says, you should know you never tell a woman what to say. It don't work. In fact, she encourages me. She's the one who tells me to get back up here when I get kicked in the teeth by the council or the town manager or whatever. She's the one who told me to get this getup out. I had it for 25 years, we picked it up in Hawaii, so you gotta do a little change.
All right. I guess you're never too old to change.
Yeah. My main thing tonight, as you all know, I'm opposed to the Renovators' new project. I just can't deal with $61.9 million for a project like that. Everything is overpriced now. It's just, it's just way out of line. And that type of project, like I told you, being on a committee for six years for the other schools, there's so much waste, so much unnecessary things done. And one thing I wanted to mention, when they did Linden Street School, they threw out so many things. People showed up with trailers to take used furniture and chairs and stuff. We even picked up a load of them, brought them to Jeanette's bamboo boutique and sold them, and I think she donated the money to the handicapped children. In the high school, a word went out that electronics were thrown out. We were told that people from other school districts came in and took some of that equipment and used it in their schools. And this, this is why, you know, you have to understand, I'm not against renovating that school with new safety entrance and, you know, the heating, roof, air conditioning, plumbing, the whole 90 yards, but I know nobody's agreeing with the way we could have done it with the longer-term maintenance, but we'll see what happens tomorrow. I'm going to be out there, not as much because it's going to be cold and windy, but I'll be out there with my sign to vote no, and if any of you would like to hold a sign with me, you're welcome.
All right.
Thank you. I made it in three minutes.
You still got 24 seconds. I mean, you want to talk bad about my dog or something while you're up there?
You had a dog. Anyway, have a great day tomorrow, and whichever way it comes out, it comes out. I'll live with it, and so will you.
Well, we'll see you out there. I'm sure I'll be out there a little bit as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll be out there, too.
All right. All right. Anyone else? Marilyn, I'm not sure, or Jenny, you're the only other two. Anybody? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to overlook you. I'm sorry. But anyone else wished you'd address the council tonight?
You know what I would call?
Okay. See?
Very brief, Tom Fode, 15 Bradley Street. I, the only thing I want to say is I just want to thank the council for finally giving the town a chance to vote tomorrow. Obviously, I have an opinion about how it it should go, but regardless of whether my view wins the day or not, I just appreciate the fact that we're, we finally have a chance for the people to have their say. That has been prevented for too long, and I appreciate that this new council has made sure to give us that opportunity. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one, we will move on, we'll obviously move on past old business. There is none, so we are up to new business. We'll be returning to item number one after the executive session, so I'll ask for a motion on item number two, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution Authorizing Application for Historic Preservation Grant.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number three.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, April 8th at 7:00 p.m. in the municipal center to hear public comment on the town council's fiscal year 2025 proposed budget.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number four.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Motion to set the location of the annual town meeting for the purpose of voting on the town council's proposed fiscal year 2025 budget at the Plainville Firehouse Tuesday, April 30th, 2024, for the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Tax refunds.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions on the tax refunds this evening? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Any other discussions of interest?
Mr. Chairman, I have just one, if I could, for the council. It's more of a public service announcement on the Connecticut Department of Transportation on the closing of Woodford Avenue, westbound on ramp to ID4. They will be doing drainage work, and they will require the closure from Tuesday, March 19th through Thursday, March 21st. Project will have a scheduled timeline of 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on those dates. So just wanted the public to be aware of that.
All right. So if anyone needs to go to Southington, you probably should take Route 10, I imagine. All right. Any other discussions from anyone? If not, item number 13, matter appropriate for executive session. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Motion to go into executive session to discuss CGS 1260 and 21, oh, 210, I'm sorry, 210 P5B.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second, and that has to do with the Connecticut general statutes that we're identifying there. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. We'll go into executive session, and we may be coming out of the executive session to make a motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So if everyone wants to take four or five minutes, we'll meet you in the conference room in the back.